June meeting of Falls Township Planning Commission. Could you call the roll, please, John?
Can you hear me?
Yeah.
All right. Mary Leschuck? Thomas Hughes?
Here.
Edward Crow?
Here.
John Haney, present. Brian Binney?
Here. All right, great. All right, the first item is J.G. Petrucci track, Ben Farrel's Drive and South Pennsylvania Avenue, tax parcel thirteen oh five one zero zero one dash two zero two eight. Preliminary final land development for Hyacinth property. Mr. Murphy?
Good evening. Correct. The applicant tonight is J.G. Petrucci. And the site in question is about eighteen and a quarter acres. Located on Ben Farrel's Drive. And we are proposing to develop the site for a two hundred and twenty-five thousand square foot warehouse with a user yet to be identified. The goal would be to identify and permit a single user, if possible, to occupy the structure. And that's our current marketing plan. We have received in the normal course, Brian, as you know, the various review letters from Joe Jones, Remington Vernick, Bucks County Planning Commission, and the Fire Marshal. We've also updated and submitted our waiver letter to address one or two waivers that were not previously identified. Eric Clayce from Gilmore is the project engineer. And he's talked to Joe Jones, I have as well. So, Brian, it's your pleasure if you want us to run through, or Joe can run through his letter, or however you want to do it. We're prepared to move quickly. In large measure, the comments are will comply. We can talk about the waivers. And any other issues that planning commission has. So, however you'd like to proceed, we'll go.
Okay, just, just so I understand and everybody understands, so this building is going to be built without an occupant, or is it going to wait until they have an occupant and build it?
I'll defer to Joe or Greg Rogers, if you want to comment beyond what I already said. So, both, you have to unmute yourselves.
Yeah, our plan is to build it. Build it on spec.
All right. Does any of the board members have any comments about or questions about the general use or purpose of the building that they'd like to ask now?
Yeah, so this, this isn't going to be used by Hyacinth. I guess, reading through here, my understanding was that Hyacinth would be using that, they're a dental implant company.
The answer to that would be no, they are the current legal owner of the track, but we are purchasing the building or acquiring the site from them for use by a tenant or user that we would identify and permit to occupy.
Okay. Then I guess, Ed, if you, if you'd like to just touch on the waiver requests?
Sure. I know that Eric had circulated an updated waiver letter as of, it stated today, but I think he sent it in yesterday, if I'm not correct, Eric. So, we can talk about them. The first one require, or request a partial waiver from doing the full traffic study, that's an issue that we've already covered at some length with your traffic consultant, Remington Vernick, and they're supportive of that partial waiver. Based on the limited amount of off-site traffic that it's, or impact it's going to have. And that's referenced in the Remington Vernick review letter as well, June fourth, where they acknowledge they would support that partial waiver.
And how many, how many truck or traffic trips do they think that's going to generate this building?
Eric?
I'm going to defer to Greg or Joe on that, or George, if he wants to. How many trucks are you guys expecting on a daily basis, guys?
Eric, give me a minute. If you, if you recall, you had prepared and provided to Remington Vernick a letter that supported the number of trips based upon I T E standards. So, why don't we dig that up real quick and give that to them, because our, our expectation is it, it will be at that number until a tenant is determined. But based upon that square footage and size, it met the I T E parking counts for A M and P M P.
George, if you look for that data, we'll go on to the next one, come back to that to answer that question.
All right, Eric, please do the same, just in events that I don't locate it.
Okay.
The second item deals with a request to modify a portion of the maximum driveway grade from five percent to seven point four in the one area of the new proposed driveway to Ben Farrel's. And Eric, maybe you can talk, it's only a limited area we're talking about where the grade exceeds five percent, correct?
Yeah, I'm going to, I'm going to share my screen real quick.
Okay.
All right. Is everybody able to see the screen?
Yeah.
Okay, down in the west corner, which is the closest to the bridge along Ben Farrel's, it would be the section from approximately where my little, my thing is, pointer is, to here would be seven and a half. The requirement, the maximum requirement in the ordinance is five, so it's really a de minimis change from five to seven.
And just for everybody's benefit, make sure I'm right about this, these are slopes that are not natural, they're manmade already, correct, Eric?
That is correct.
Okay, so we're not disturbing virgin territory here where we're proposing to increase that slope. The next one deals with sidewalks along streets, where we've asked for a waiver, given the obvious location of the site.
Hey, before, before we go to the next waiver, can I just ask one question?
Sure.
In regards to that, that site access point there. Is there a way that we can access the site from, I think it's Old Boardentown Road on the, I guess that's the, well, it's the northwest corner of the drawing. Yeah, over in that space where Boardentown Road, I guess, is the truck haul road that comes through there, or at least it's called Boardentown Road on, if you're looking on Google Maps.
Yeah, there will not be access from that to the site, no.
Okay.
Who won't allow that access?
We're not, there will be no access to, into the site. Petrucci being the new owner, we're going to block any other, there used to be access from Middle Drive right here, but that's being cut off.
Tom's question, I think, was, why can't you access it from Old Boardentown Road and avoid this steep driveway?
There's no connection over there. There's no connection to the property over here.
Okay, can I, can I share my screen real quick?
Let me stop sharing mine.
So, right here where, this is the access point into the, into that haul road, which on here is labeled as Old Boardentown Road. The site's here. You're saying you can't get over in here from Old Boardentown Road?
Okay, I'm flipped upside down here, could you go over that again, of where our site is?
Hey, let me. Do this. So there's your site right there, there's the Hyacinth building. Here's the site. Here's the, I guess it's called the haul road, but Old Boardentown Road comes through here. So my question was, if you go back to, when we go back to look at your drawing, this comes in that, that north, the northwest corner of the drawing, but I think, I can't see my...
Yeah, it's like... Old Boardentown Road does not enter into this property.
Okay, if you're telling me there's no way to access it, and that's the only way for, for that other driveway to go in?
Yeah, Old Boardentown is outside of the Hyacinth property. Hyacinth does not own to Old Boardentown, it actually comes short of it.
Okay. There's, there's no frontage at all along the property line, as if it was a regular, you know, road access? I just don't want it, the planning commission members to be misled, I mean, I was out at the site and I actually used the drive from Middle Town, pulled the sack, and drove along the pavement and, you know, made a right at that dirt road and left the site the way Tom's asking. And I know that that paved road that connects to Boardentown, I think, is on Hyacinth's property and it's going to be cut off, I think there was a, correct me if I'm wrong, but just so they have a full picture of what you're saying.
Yeah, our surveyors, when we surveyed, we don't have any of that road within our, within the Hyacinth property. And I visited the site as well, and that property comes short of the bridge, and that Boardentown goes under the bridge.
No, there's, it's, uh, let me go back to that. Oh yeah, I guess, I guess that does go back and under, so where?
Yeah, if you, if you let me, can I share my screen again?
Yeah. Because I see the track, train tracks.
All right, here's Old Boardentown Road. Here's our property line. It's about fifty feet outside of our property. Here's where the road is. I'll stop the share now.
All right, Tom?
Yeah.
Go ahead, Ed.
Okay. We had just started to mention the third waiver dealing with the sidewalk waiver request, given the nature of the location and that it's inside the P E, K I P C, there's not going to be any pedestrian traffic, so we didn't believe it would be appropriate to install sidewalks.
Ed, can I interrupt you for one second?
Sure.
There's other sections of the ordinance that say that sidewalks are not required within the K I P C, so I don't think you really need that waiver.
So we can mark that as N A?
Yes.
Okay. The next waiver on Eric's list is the request to install Belgian block curving in lieu of the standard concrete curb detail, and I can't imagine anybody would have an objection to that, so. The fifth one, or now the fourth one, if we eliminate one ninety-one thirty-nine, would be to permit improvements to be located within a utility easement area. And Eric, if you want to highlight on the plan what, where that condition would exist, so everybody understands it.
Okay, as everyone knows, most of U.S. Steel has utility easements all through it, and they have paving over it, but specifically to our site, there is an existing utility easement that comes through the northeast portion, the back part of the site, and we would be proposing our loading dock area and some trailer storage within the easement, so it would just be paving. And that's, that's, we would also be crossing it with our water and sewer laterals, so that's why we would need the waiver to provide the paving and cross it with our laterals.
Okay. The next three waivers all relate to manmade steep slopes and woodlands, and each, we'll take them individually, talk about, we're asking for a waiver to permit more of a disturbance of the manmade steep slopes than the eighty-five percent protection ratio that's otherwise required. And again, Eric, you can just highlight, I assume the area that's principally in question is the proposed area of the second access?
Yeah, the manmade steep slopes are along the right of way of Ben Farrel's, and specifically, most of the steep slope disturbance would be right in this vicinity where the second access is.
Okay. The next one, the next two deal with the, with different categories of woodlands. And Eric, again, let's highlight on the plan where what is referred to as the woodlands exist, and then we can talk about. So the first one deals with woodlands located in environmentally sensitive areas, which means typically either steep slopes or floodplains.
Yeah, that would be the area...
Things like that, so highlight, Eric, if you would, wear that condition.
Yeah, I'm circling it right here, within the right of way along Ben Farrel's Road. The steep slopes that were manmade along here had trees over the years growing them, so we'd be disturbing all of these.
Okay. And then while you're at it, the other waiver is for woodlands noted in those environmentally sensitive areas, and again, we propose to disturb those. We want to highlight that area.
That would be these little patches through the site.
They're non-contiguous patches of woods, none of this is like contiguous, you know, virgin woodlands here, right? Second or third growth?
That's correct.
Okay. And the only sensitive area they're in are steep slopes, they're not in wetlands?
No, no wetlands on, on the property.
The next waiver, we have a couple more to talk about, one is requesting a waiver to install curves along both sides of the, the street, Eric, you want to highlight that for everybody?
Let me just go back to sharing here. Okay, that would be along our drives. So we really don't have any streets, but we have drives.
Right, and you should talk about the stormwater implications of that, because I assume you've talked to Joe about that.
Yeah, we are, we are proposing curbing along our drives, but we are proposing a few wide breaks here, so we can have sheet flow of stormwater coming from the drive right into the detention basin. Due to the fact it's mostly an existing driveway here, and we, there's an existing easement as well, we can't change the elevation of the road too much, so the best thing for us to do is have curb breaks and have sheet flow into the basin, but we are providing curb for the majority of the drive.
All right, and Joe, is that something, that a condition that you acknowledge and support the waiver on?
Yeah, we have no objection to the curb cuts as they propose them.
Okay. Last two, one is the typical one you see about requesting a waiver from requiring all existing features to be shown within two hundred feet of the site. Eric, typically we handle that with municipal engineers like Joe by providing an aerial or some other way to satisfy everybody that that information is provided, it just may not be by an actual in-the-field survey, right?
Yes, I don't want to speak for Joe, but I think Joe sees enough existing topography around the site that he's comfortable, but I'll leave Joe to answer that.
Yeah, we typically just hold it out in case there's areas such as the area where we're concerned about off-site runoff, where we might just want an additional...
Right.
Few spot elevations.
Right, okay. And the last one deals with the, the waiver from providing tree replacement in full. On the plan, there is a calculation shown, and Eric can talk about the number of trees we are proposing to replant on the site. and Eric can talk about the number of trees we are proposing to replant on the site, if you want to go to your landscaping sheet, Eric, but just walk everybody through it. What we're asking is that beyond the trees that we can plant on site, we're asking for a waiver of the obligation to plant the rest of them, because we simply don't have room to do that, so.
One second while I get to the sheet here.
Eric, if you could also, if you could tell us how many trees you're going to remove versus how many trees you're going to replace?
Yeah, what we have here is, well, I'll give you the caliper inches of trees, because that's how we measured it. We're removing 1,476 caliper inches. When you divide that up, it's, you've got to divide it up by three-inch trees, so you divide the 1,476 by three, we would be required to replace 493 trees. We are planting 29 parking lot trees and 25 street trees, so 50, or, yeah, 54 trees. But that's really, that all fits on site, because the rest of the site is made up of building, loading dock, and basin. I think I passed it here. Sorry, technical difficulties here with being able to page up and down Wikipedia. So the chart I'm looking at for everyone is right here, the amount of removal was this, 1,476.8 inches. You divide it by three, you get 493 replacement trees. The, move back up here. We're planting 29 parking lot trees, and we have 25 street trees we're planting. And as you can see on the plan, there's the street trees and parking lot trees. As you can see with the site, it's either driveway, loading dock area, building, or basin. There's no room left for other trees.
Well, I know that, to me, it seems crazy that you need to put in 492 trees, but I've just did some quick math, and I may be off by a couple trees here and there, but it appears that you're cutting out 132 trees. So I would think that maybe a compromise would be, whatever trees you're planting here, you can either give the rest of them to the township or plant them someplace else and not have to put in 492, but I think you should at least replace as many as you're taking out at discount to caliper inches, just number of trees versus number of trees.
Yeah, I would agree with that sentiment, Brian.
Brian, what's your number, you said there, your math did 130 some trees that we were removing, forgetting caliper inches?
I just, I just roughly counted one row of these tree replacement schedule, and it multiplied by four, and I come up with like 132, but it could be off by a couple here or there.
Okay.
We, we can come up with the number of trees, we have that, but that's not how we do the calc spread the ordinance, so we, we can figure out how many trees were located.
I, I understand that, but I, I think the ordinance is a little crazy. Trying to come up with a reasonable compromise.
Sure. Okay, we'll take that under advisement, Brian. That has some logic to it, so we'll work on that.
Don't say that out too loud, Ed, I don't want people to think I have logic.
No, I'm used to you, I know what you're up to, so. You've been illogical for a generation, I know.
Not going to change.
I know, I know.
Does any of the board members have any questions or comments?
No.
Just to complete the loop, I don't know, Eric, if there's any other value going through the June 4th, Remington Vernick one, we pretty much covered everything in that, ditto with the Bucks County Planning Commission from March 20, and the Fire Marshal, I know we just got a more recent one, but I think we're fine with all those, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, just so the minutes are complete, we did, we do have all of those. And Joe, I don't think there's any others that we don't have, right, I think we covered all of it.
Joe Jones?
Yep.
Yeah, no, I believe that we've covered everything.
Okay, good.
So, Remington Vernick is, everything will comply. We have the waivers from Joe's letter, and the Fire Marshal's will comply, correct?
Correct.
Yep.
For the partial waiver on 19178C, Joe, you'll provide the information that, that you're looking for, for them to comply with?
Correct.
Okay.
Joe, you have anything you'd like to add?
No, I mean, it's not going to matter, but I would add that you do get credit for the shrubs you're planting, so that'll lessen the requirement to the point where it might make the chairman suggested more, you know, not valid, more palatable. So you'll get a reduction in your requirement for your shrubs as well, and just for clarification purposes, you can plant at a larger caliper to reduce the number of trees. So I think in that convoluted math, we can probably get it to what the chairman requested.
I don't say that too much out loud either, good God.
Mr. Takiti, you have anything to add?
The only thing I push out is, you revised the plan to update the floodplain information. It's dated 2015, the current revision is 2017.
We'll get that taken care of.
The note, and then if there's any differences in the delineation, just provide that as well, please.
Okay.
I have nothing else.
Thanks, if there's no other comments or questions, then we'll entertain a motion. Mary, you didn't do it?
I was waiting, I'll do it, um, yeah, I'll make a motion to recommend approval for the preliminary and final land development application.
Right.
D G Petrucci Track, Ben Fairless Drive, K I P C, P M P number 13-051-001-028, zone M P M, based on the Jones Engineering Letter dated June 3rd, 2020, the Remington Vernick's letter dated June 4th, 2020, and the Fire Marshal Letter dated February 25th, 2020, with waivers, with waivers, 191-36B, 191-45C, 191-52 dot 1B3B2, 191-52 dot 1B4B1, 191-52 dot 1B4B2, 191-62B, and partial waivers of 191-30I4. We decided that 191-41 is not applicable.
9, 39.
What was that?
I think we decided one, or Joe recommended that 19139 was no longer applicable because sidewalks are not required in the K I P C.
Sorry, that was my bad, yep, okay, with a partial waiver then of 191-41 for the curbing.
Right.
Um, a partial of 191-78C2, and a partial of 199-3A. Obviously, that will be figured out a little bit later for your trees and shrubs and all that stuff.
So, I think you forgot the first one, Ed, if I'm not mistaken, did we get 19130I4?
Yeah, because that's a partial.
Partial only, correct.
Did we get the information, did everybody find information on how many truck trips are going to come in here?
We did, and I can, I can share my screen to the email. All right, can everybody see this email right here? This is the email I sent to Remington and Vernick in April. The estimated A M peak truck trip generation is 52 trips, and the estimated P M truck trip generation is 55 trips. If you go to the end of the sentence, this is based on the 12-hour A M and 12-hour P M, so it's 52 trips in the morning over 12 hours, and 55 trips in the P M over 12 hours. So as you can see, it's not a lot of truck traffic. It's very conservative.
Okay.
Thanks, Eric.
All right, we have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Hold the board, John.
Mary Lashkuck?
Yes.
Thomas Hughes?
Yes.
John Haney, yes. Edward Crow?
Yes.
Brian Benny?
Yes. Thank you, gentlemen.
Good.
Thank you, guys. Good luck.
Thank you, see you soon.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, the next item is to approve the minutes from the February Planning Commission.
Make a motion to approve the minutes from the February Planning Commission. I don't know what the date was, I don't have it in front of me.
February 25th.
February 25th, you said that.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Abstained.
All right, the motion to adjourn, I think that's it, right?
Uh, just one question, who seconded the motion for Petrucci? I missed it.
Tom.
Tom, okay, thank you.
All right, who's going to the bar?
I am.
I am.
Not today.
Not today.